I have enough for my office.
Get my picture married. That's pretty funny.
The sweetest.
He's a little clingy, but. Yeah, and grandma now, we're taking from grandma. But he'll get over it.
Those toothbrushes are the best stimulation for it, too.
Yeah, I got a video of his dad brushing his teeth in the mirror the other day. It was pretty great.
Hello, David. How are you doing?
Good. How are you doing?
Great.
How are your brains?
Wonderful.
I saw a picture where you were. Old enough.
Yes, they're just wonderful.
I'm getting ready to be an Uber driver. For my sister and brother-in-law.
Because.
Take them to the airport, pick them up, that's when they go overseas.
Hello, Forrest. Thank you for your service. Thank you Kent for your service.
Thank you, thank you.
Who else is there?
Yeah, Kent.
Yeah, he's kind of blind and.
Harry is completely shadowed.
My watching my mind. So people have no way that show. We, uh, the Treble Bakers sang out at Flint Hills High School. They did a, uh, an assembly for veterans from there. And we sang with their choir. It was a really neat program.
Today?
Yeah. Yes, they do. And it was always good. It was cool.
They have an excellent.
Yeah, they stayed them and then.
Choir director.
And the student has the student head of crystal and he's real big. I think honor for that I've been for you. And since kids.
Yeah.
It is about that time. Are we good?
I've, yeah, I've not heard from Linda, so.
Oh, she's in Hawaii, I thought.
Oh, that's right.
That's her.
That's right. She did tell me that.
Okay, then, um, I will call our regular board meeting of the Butler Community College Board of Trustees to order. This is our November eleventh meeting and we'll start with Pledge of Allegiance.
Well, we'll be here. For which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Christine, at some point, I will not look over your shoulder looking for a flag that is now two months in a row isn't, hasn't been there, so. We've moved it. Okay, uh, would entertain a motion to, um, I guess first we need to amend the agenda to insert an additional action item as letter E as an echo, which is the sabbatical request that is printed off in the material in front of you.
I would move to add sabbatical request for Dr. Vicki McCain to item whatever he said, nine eight, I mean, E, do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly's absent. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yeah.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Pass the six oh. Do we have any other amendments to be agenda?
No, but Mr. Chairman, could you review again on a sabbatical how they are paid?
I believe it, I mean, I believe it is paid leave for the sabbatical.
Their factor salary or?
I thought it was regular salary, didn't. On the hot seat. You can go sit down, go sit down first, please. Perfect ti- perfect timing.
Their salary, yes. Um, this application is for a semester, so it's regular full salary for a semester.
Okay. But the, so our policy would allow for a one-year sabbatical, but then they'd only be paid for one semester?
No.
No.
Correct. Thank you.
Any, um, do we have any amendments to the agenda besides the one that we just approved? If not, would entertain a motion to amend, to approve the agenda as amended.
I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly's absent. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Shear?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Okay. Pass the six oh. We will move on to recognitions, uh, Dr. Daniel.
Yes, so today we are recognizing our veterans and we have two in the room. Um, we have a, an entire page of them that represent about two hundred and seven years worth of service. So, um, Forrest Rhodes and Kent Williams, you know, thank you for your service. We appreciate it and gratitude for taking care of us.
Thank you all. Has anyone, uh, signed up for public comment? No? Anyone here wishing to participate in public comment? Seeing no one running to the podium, we will move on to standing reports and start off with, uh, Sam and student government. I don't see if she's gonna, she gonna assume that. Well, we'll see. We can come back if she, if she comes in late, we can come back. Um, how about, uh, Harry Smith for staff?
Um, the operational staff will be taking, um, nominations to adopt a family for Christmas. Once the family is selected, uh, they will receive a monetary donation, which is typically around two hundred and fifty dollars to hopefully help make their holiday season a little bit brighter. Um, we're in, we're, we as a group are excited to continue this tradition, um, this season and look forward to supporting the family that we choose. Um, on the fundraising side, we'll be holding a buy one, get one sale on our Midwest mixes just in time for the holidays. It's a great, great way for everyone to stock up and share with friends and family while supporting our ongoing activities. Be on the lookout for more information about the buy one, get one sale coming soon.
Corey, what, what criteria do you use for the adoptive family? Is it a Butler, is it a Butler family or could it be a community family or what do you look for?
Well, that's, I, this is the first time I've ever been in this position, so I'm not exactly sure. I think we tried to choose a Butler family. But if there's somebody outside of that, then we also will look at that, too.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll put a plug in for the mixes. We got some last year. They're really good.
I'll make sure your wife gets a.
Yes, please do. Little does she know. Um, professional employees.
Hello. Good to see you all again. Uh, last month when I wasn't able to be here, Cory let you all know about our pending trip to the, uh, Topeka for the higher ed symposium. And that happened just this past weekend, so I was gonna let you know how that went. We had a great turnout. Several of our professional employees attended as well as faculty and advisors from eight other Kansas community colleges. And this is really consistently a really great conference. It's really valuable for us to connect with our colleagues across the state, compare our experiences, talk about what's working well and what challenges we share. Um, this is the fourth, I think, year in a row that we've done this symposium. And while there has been attempts at structured presentations, we have sort of morphed it into, we just want to sit around and talk to each other about what we're all doing at our colleges. So, um, we really just spend the whole weekend just talking, um, to each other and it's, it's great. Um, we did, while we were there, make plans for um, a higher ed day at the Capitol during the next legislative session. So, um, I would welcome hearing about what issues um, you would like, uh, your professional employees to speak to legislators about. And I think you all know how to contact me if you do have some suggestions toward that end. That's all I have.
When is that day?
We haven't picked a day yet. It will be during the next legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Finance Committee, Dave? I'm assuming Linda's not presenting.
Yeah. Sorry. I should have turned back to that page.
Don't worry.
A couple of things. Michael Gerber has all of the information for the audit. And he is reviewing the audit and we should receive it. Um, the financial audit after Thanksgiving. And I think that there's some compliance thing that's a part of the government that we haven't been able to do because the government's been shut down. So those things will all get done. Um, in the budget, um, there was the, on student services for this year. Um, there was a higher percentage in there and part of that was, um, the, um, TFA to buy the bus that we approved for the athletic department. Uh, and that was of three hundred and thirty-two thousand four hundred. Um, it is, uh, out of the campus life expense, so it's kind of showing up in student services, but it'll, it will be reclassified, so that'll be all taken care of. And, um, that was, did I hit everything?
Yes.
Other than that, we're looking in pretty good shape because nobody's contacted us that our audit has been out of order. And so.
We do want to talk a little bit about the, uh, budget update. We normally do a fall budget update and we're going to do the fall budget update. But in the past, we generally had a work session for that. Since it's, uh, being done in November and it falls around Thanksgiving. What our plan is, is just to send that book to you. And then if there are questions or if we want to make some time during the December uh, board meeting, we can do that. But we're planning on not having a work session specifically to go over the fall budget update book.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And while I do have the floor, I did want to show off this lovely piece of pottery. I went to the Art of Butler at the Redler Center two weeks ago. And they had said that I had won this piece of pottery. It's a beautiful piece of pottery made by one of our students. I can't read the signature, so I don't know who did it, but it was one of our Butler students, but I wanted to highlight this at this meeting that student art, there was a lot of student art and, uh, and the culinary, the food there was exilante. And so, uh, but I just wanted to show it off that this, that particular evening highlighted things that the students did in the fine arts department, so I wanted to highlight that.
It was a neat event. They had a mixed, a mixed ensemble of, uh, the instrument group that sounded phenomenal, sitting back on the, on the patio that was playing.
And singers.
Neat events.
It was, it was coolly good.
Oh, that's right. Headline is right. They were off. Okay, thank you, Dave. Um, a foundation board report, the foundation board meets next week, so we'll have an update at the December meeting. Um, Dr. Daniel, your report?
Yes, I am going to start off by, um, meeting a request that Trustee Good had at the September board meeting to hear from a faculty member. So we have Ms. Amy Hornbaker with us and she's gonna talk a little bit about what she's done in her classroom that I think is pretty amazing.
Hi, thank you all for having me this afternoon. Uh, like Dr. Daniel said, my name is Amy Hornbaker. I'm a professor in the Mass Communications Department. I teach a lot of classes and I love them all, but I'm here to talk about a project in one of my favorite classes. So last fall, I began to ask the question, how could I get my students out into the community? How could I bridge from what they were learning in the classroom to hands-on practical work that benefited our chief stakeholders, particularly here in El Dorado? So I looked at a class called Media Buying and Selling. Media buying and selling exists because for professional communicators, most roles butt up against the need to sell in some way. And what we're consistently hearing from the industry is students are coming out of their universities not knowing how to do that. And so we've had this class to help give our students a leg up, uh, once they join their future colleagues. Originally, the final for this project was very academic. Uh, we asked students to imagine a company and create some work on behalf of that imagined company. Here's what we ended up doing instead. The entire class was revisioned, uh, to have a very practical, very hands-on strategic communication and strategic marketing plan that they produced at the end of the semester for a local El Dorado business. Our students not only created this plan, but also created media samples, went out, got pricing for placing those media samples and were able to present all of this to the business owner. So my next challenge, of course, was finding a business that could do this. So I started with Prairie Blossom Nursery and Garden Center here in El Dorado. And I talked with owner Steve Binley and I pitched my idea to him and said, can you meet with us three times? And can we do this for you? And Steve thankfully got on board. He said, I love the idea. I want to help students. I definitely need your work. So we started our work with Steve. We met once at the beginning of the semester, uh, the class came to the nursery so we could see Steve in context and learn more about his business and what was important to him. Our next meeting was midway through the semester. Steve came to us uh, so that our students could present this work to them using all the technology we had here and they could see some samples and ideas and Steve could provide his feedback and we could adjust as needed. And then our final project, we went all out. I'm so sorry. We went all out. I set up our classroom like a boardroom, uh, because I want them to have the experience that they're going to need once they're finished here. So we set it up like a boardroom. And Steve came in, uh, we gave our big project to him, uh, they showed, uh, their work. They showed some practical, physical samples of what they had put together and conceptualized for Steve and Steve ended up loving it. So when we began this project, he knew that he had no obligation to use anything that the class created for him, that his agreement was to provide this feedback. But he ended up really liking it. So we kept the partnership going. Uh, so spring of this year, uh, the video production class here at Butler ended up making some of those additional videos that that media plan had, uh, suggested. I actually went into the nursery last week and found out that he's doing yet another one of our ideas. So all in all, Steve benefited from this, which that was my number one goal, but our students also loved it. In Plan A of this afternoon, I was to have a student come with me. Well, that student's actually busy working for the Wichita Thunder Hockey, so he couldn't come. We ran to Plan B, a student who's killing it at KU. Uh, she wasn't able to be here, but she was so excited that she at the very last minute sent me a five-minute video about this project because that's as, as short as she could get it. They spent all semester talking about what a pleasure it was to help Steve and they always called him by his first name because they felt a lot of ownership in this project. So that was last fall. This fall, uh, we're partnering with E-Town Nutrition, another local business owned by Tricia Ayers in downtown El Dorado. So far, we've had our kickoff meeting and our mid semester meeting, uh, to help guide that uh, project and we're looking forward to the end of the semester when, uh, we'll present to Tricia and show her what our students have come to. What I appreciate about this project is we're getting the chance to connect with business owners. We're getting out of the classroom. We're helping our students understand that this is what this looks like. Here's what it looks like in a classroom. This is what it looks like hands-on. And we're getting some experience for them in doing that in a way that ties back to all of the course objectives, everything we've been covering in the semester and giving them that hands-on and leg up, uh, for the work that they're doing in the future. So this class is only offered in the fall, so if you all have any suggestions for Fall 2026, I've got my business card, love to hear it, uh, but we're looking.
Shelby Smith.
We're looking for a local, we're looking for local businesses, uh, that are willing to have a class come in and work with them and provide them something that they may not have the capacity to do in-house, uh, but our students do and hopefully we can continue this mutually beneficial relationship. Thanks.
Do we get to see that five-minute video?
Uh, I would love to send it to Jennifer, if that's all right.
Yeah, send it to me and then I'll forward it.
Wonderful. Yeah, she, she sent with apologies. I couldn't get it any shorter. She's still so excited about this. They really had a great time.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. So next up on October thirtieth, we held our legislative luncheon and we hosted Senator Fack, Senator Wilburn, and also Representative Williams. Um, I think by everybody's account, it was a great meeting. Um, all three of the legislators got up and spoke to us as well as Heather Morgan. Some of the big things, I think, one of the most important that came out of it was the changes in Senate Bill one fifty-five. So Senate Bill one fifty-five is referencing Excel and CTE. And we know that statewide, the funding has grown, grown way beyond what the state can fund. So we had to look at changes to that Excel and CTE and what it turns out is, you know, the, um, community colleges as a whole got together, the presidents, and we discussed where we felt like we could give up, you know, for the state. We're asking for flat funding this year. We're not asking for anything more than what we had, but in Excel and CTE, business courses, culinary courses and cosmetology courses are no longer going to be funded under Excel and CTE. Of course, we've looked at what those funding changes, um, thanks to Dr. Dunlevy. He's done a great job of looking at what does that mean to the college in terms of funding? And honestly, it, it will be a small hit, but it won't be huge because those classes will in turn be qualified for tiered funding because they're CTE-based. So, um, a little bit of change there, but not huge in terms of our portion of it. Uh, so anyway, I think everybody came out of there very pleased with the comments that were made, the discussions that took place, and we felt really good about it. Um, outside of that, I think, um, the other thing to know is that, um, Kent Williams team has completed the training for the ZBB budgeting. All that is done and all the departments are underway creating those budgets from the scratch. And then there will be some open forums that will be attended where those budgets will be presented. So all of that work is still underway and moving well. Um, Thursday, the Capital Projects team is going to meet and we're discussing the Centennial Project, which I'm just giving the board heads up. We'll be approaching the board in December with that particular project, um, after it gets discussed in Capital Projects. So outside of that, thank you.
Questions? Dr. Daniel, thank you. Educational facilities, we were supposed to meet tomorrow and they canceled the meeting for lack of anything to talk about. So. I'll move on to the monitoring report and that is online high school and community learning. Dr. Reinkbauer?
Hello.
Hello.
Um, at, well, did you email it as well as?
Yes.
Okay, so via email or in front of you, I believe, is printed. Uh, we had a couple of first was supplemental, we caught some errors, uh, so apologize for that. And then there were some questions that were asked after that supplemental information was sent, so that is a second document that you have. And I would be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I had to ask, I think in twenty twenty-three, you guys presented all this, so we've got twenty twenty-five data, but I don't have twenty twenty-four total credit hours.
Uh, that is in that second document, the follow-up information, that first page. So.
Six fifty.
Yeah, AY twenty-four, the supplemental information's two pages there.
Okay.
At the top, you see it?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Why do you think there's a decrease in credit hours?
Uh, at which location?
McConnell.
For McConnell? I, I think it's a variety of things. I think, um, sometimes the classes don't make because they don't have enough enrollment and that has happened so often that our students are tending to gravitate towards online or Andover. Um, we've been working to try to create high flex options and to set up classes in a schedule that meets those needs. Um, one of the ways that we've seen progress in that area is, uh, through the flight line. So the flight line, those airmen and women are on the flight line. They can't leave. So that gives them the opportunity. Now we can go teach on the flight line. We've seen an increase in enrollment in the spring. Um, unfortunately, those classes this fall have been affected by the government shutdown. And, um, a lot of times those classes are offered in late start options, like second, eight weeks. So those numbers are not captured in that twentieth day.
So how many people are, what's the flight line? How many people are in it?
I do not know the answer to that. Do you? Okay, we can get that for you then.
There would be quite a few when they're with mechanics and fuel and.
Yeah, I don't, you don't want to speculate.
Uh, movement of aircraft, uh.
Yeah.
There's only fourteen active members attending, so it can't be more than fourteen.
Yeah, that's. That's AY twenty-four.
Well, Mary Martha, was your question kind of generically, how many airmen and women are on the flight line total at McConnell?
Yes.
Not that are just taking classes?
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to know both, if yours though.
Okay.
I had a question, uh, from there, we, we had revenue generated versus credit hours, so in nineteen, it was two hundred and eighteen bucks a credit hour and twenty, it was two hundred and forty-three bucks a credit hour of just revenue generated.
Can you tell me what you're looking at? I'm sorry.
This was our thing from twenty twenty-three. I forwarded it to the board to the.
Okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't have given it.
No, that's okay.
Anyway, uh, in twenty twenty-one, it was two hundred and seventy-five bucks credit hour. Twenty twenty-two is three hundred and thirty-two dollars a credit hour, so we're generating more dollar per credit hour every year with fewer credit hours. I didn't know how that went.
Could I look at your document? Sorry, I have the copy of it, but it's on my computer. This by this? Or this?
The revenue, year revenues. And it was just suddenly decreasing. Which I always just figured, pay a much better hour.
So revenue generated at the top of that sheet came directly from four of us, which would include all tuition fees, state aid. And so if you're only taking it by the tuition and fee rate, then you don't account for state aid.
Right, I'm just saying, it sounds secure, seeing that he plays two or twenty-three, so it's telling it. You paid more dollars per credit hour, the revenue. I mean, it's a good thing.
Well, the price of tuition and fees has gone up. Yeah, I guess, I guess I don't understand that calculation. I thought you were comparing this to this. Correct. So the revenue here includes state aid, so if you divide it, that's not going to be what we're charging.
No, 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 I didn't say we're charging. I didn't know.
Right, so. So not every credit hour would be treated equal because if it's a tiered technical course, the reimbursement rate's higher. If it's a gen ed, the reimbursement late, rate is different. So if we wanted to break, I mean, we could look at that differently, but I think just comparing it like that, yeah. Yeah, it's.
Fees and Air Force money, something or other reimbursements of six or eight grand or something, but I don't remember that one.
Uh, that would be, I think what you're thinking about is the uh, tuition assistance. And what that bullet point was is just saying that that's tuition assistance that's coming into the college because those students have chosen Butler.
How many kids do we have in the early childhood academy, early childhood, early uh. Um, college academy? Pro, no, well, I mean, all over.
Um, we entered a hundred and sixty-six with the new class and there are a hundred and.
You might step up to the mic, so I apologize.
Uh, we entered a hundred and sixty-six with the new class starting this fall. And there were a hundred and thirty-two continuing.
Under the enrollment and facts on the report, that first bullet point has the new students.
Okay.
The two ninety-eight.
Under the. Recruited a hundred and sixty-six new early college academies.
And one thirty-two is continuing, so that'd be two ninety-eight, is that correct?
All I know is when I talk to high school kids, there's a lot of them that A or talk are taking. Credits. And some that are, you know, many of them are in the academy.
Sure.
And I just think that's wonderful.
Yeah, we've seen a shift in our um, population of students just taking classes in a high school. More of them are choosing that early college academy through our new MyTrack. Which is essentially allowing them to get their gen eds and then choose the electives for the career path of their choice. So that's opened up additional enrollment, but we have seen that shift from. Just the Butler County High Schools into that early college academy pathway.
Just circling back to my point, I, I just took the three hundred and thirty-two dollars a credit hour for twenty-three, which was the last one I knew. I'm a hundred and fifty-six credit hours, so I just roughly generated, we generate a fifty-two thousand dollars revenue. And the fall semester, it was my guess, just as a number that. I don't know if that's right.
We'd be happy to calculate that kind of information, just um, I know that document you had shared.
Right.
And we're, we're glad to put together information when, with the additional time.
I did have a question on uh, Colorado Correctional. It said we have development of eighteen online and board rented courses. I just didn't know how many total students we have in that facility taking classes, I don't. I know we only had so many in construction, but I had no.
Right, I believe it's in there, let me get to that section here.
Oh, yeah, it was on the.
Yeah, we have the credit hours, um, I can get you the head count.
Yeah. I appreciate it, it's not necessary.
Sure, I'd be glad to grab that.
On adult education, they work with. Uh, students containing their GED or their high school diploma.
Uh, that is one segment, yes, they also work with uh, students who are trying to reskill or upskill in the workforce. So they work closely with our CWE.
But do they?
Program.
I don't think they go for both the GED and the diploma, do they? But it was just one or the other.
Well, they're, I believe they're getting a GED. And I can find out.
Okay.
I just inherited that department in July, so I'm learning a lot. Um, from Sherry, she's an amazing leader of that department.
She is.
And they're seeing a pretty good increase in their numbers as well. And a lot of work is happening at the correctional facility for that program as well.
So she oversees the one in, in the prison too?
The, yeah, so we have two people, we have the post-secondary side and then the adult education side. So she's here, there and everywhere.
Uh, Shelby, to answer your question about the head count, uh, the four hundred and five credit hours corresponded to fifty students.
Any other questions for Heather?
Alright. Thank you.
Um, we have no strategic discussion items, so we will move into board action items, the first one. Being a follow-up on what Christina talked to us about last month on the resident hall access.
Alright, um, in twenty eighteen through the Capitol Mill, Butler was able to bring physical security to our campuses. In the form of access controls and video surveillance. Today, we're asking you to expand on this initiative and approve access controls for our residence halls. Replace our um, access control card readers with NFC readers. Creating that mobile friendly, mobile credential ready environment, as well as replacing forty crash bars that are in need of replacement. At the beginning of September, we sent a RFP to five partners as well as posting the RFP on our website. For transparency and competitiveness, allowing anybody to bid on this project. Um, in mid-September, three vendors attended the pre, um, the mandatory pre-bid walkthrough. In October, two of the three partners submitted their bids. The third uh, partner wanted to uh, propose a full system replacement with a proprietary system. Today, we are not locked into any vendor, we can take what we have in our environment and use any solution with it. And so I did not want to lock us into a proprietary system, so um, they did not submit their bid. Um, if you think about how we uh, live today, everything we do is from our cell phones. Um, you can do your online banking, your credit card statements, um, mobile pay through Google Pay or Apple Pay. You can pay from your cell phone, um, and if you have a newer car, you can even start your car from your cell phone. Um, you don't even have to take your keys out of your pocket or your purse nowadays. You just walk up to your car and if your key fob is in proximity of your car, the car will unlock. You enter your vehicle, you press the button and away you go. This is the direction technology is going, um, told, towards that mobile friendly and that contactless solutions. Um, this initiative aligns us with other institutions across Kansas that are implementing similar solutions. Um, that would be, or that would include Allen, Barton, KCK, Pratt and Highland. After discussing this initiative with the cabinet, it was decided the best way to support and fund this project would be through the remaining capital outlay funds. Originally intended for the physical security uh, initiative amongst other IT initiatives. And so I'm asking you today to modernize Butler's technology, create operational efficiencies. And continue our ongoing commitment to student safety, and I'll take any questions you may have.
Christina.
Yes.
When do you think this will have to be updated?
But when does the technology come end of life and we'll have to replace it? Um, you know, I haven't seen that life cycle yet with um, access controls. Normally, the technology stays in play for a lengthy amount of time. I'm going to say its life cycle is extensive, normally around that fifteen to twenty year mark.
Christina, if we, if at some point we evolve in our housing into something that's different than what we have. Whether it be new construction or somewhere else, are these things portable? I mean, can we salvage them out of existing buildings and move them to new?
If we decided to demo a building, we would remove the technology. Uh, the, the gentleman behind you would remove the technology from a chip. Uh, would remove the technology from the building and we would repurpose it, absolutely.
And the remaining budget of the Capitol Outlay Mill levy tax was a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty grand?
I think the remaining was four hundred and fifty thousand and this uses four hundred and fifteen of the four hundred and fifty thousand.
I think from the, the outlay tax increase was, I think it was a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty, I mean.
There's not four hundred thousand left.
And. My only opinion, I know, I've talked this a third time, we've gone on about this, you can get a rekeyable lock. Eye security from Lowe's. You put in your little doodad, you rekey it to any key and it's rekeyed, you don't remove it, you don't replace it. It's easily done, they have rental houses and they're like fifty bucks a pop, these are. Seven hundred and fifty-five dollars a pop plus all the extras.
So that is a. Well, that's a consumer product and we need an enterprise product for our environment, so our environment uses best locks. Um, and that's our key system throughout the entire institution. And um, yes, we um, can change the cores. I think Ireland wants to speak a little bit to it.
Yes, those are rekeyable, we can pull the cores, recombinate and we put them back in. But the problem is, is students in the dorms lose so many keys that we're making keys all the time and rekeying cores all the time. You know, a student doesn't walk out of their room without their phone, so they'll always have access to the room. A student that doesn't hand their cellphone off to a friend, like they hand their keys off to their friends, so.
You'll find anybody in any room today.
Find what?
You'll find anybody in any room today because they can swap keys. What, I mean, it's.
What's the same with any person in any house in town?
Well, anyway, they're gonna go hand their phone over to somebody else, say, here, go use my room for a while.
Would, does this also allow for remote? And if you had a, some sort of an emergency and you needed to immediately revoke access, you're not having to send somebody to a lock?
Absolutely, we can instantly revoke um, their credentials. Um, if they lose their card, we can revoke those credentials. If we have to um, evict somebody from the room, we can revoke those credentials as well. And it gives us live data, it's, it's a, it's a, a system that we see. Receive live logs, so we know what's going on at all times, so we know when students are coming and going. Um, and we have that, that insight.
The uh, user license on the ADS estimate is one year. Is it the same on the INA, I couldn't really find?
Yes, we provided the bill of materials in the RFP. Uh, the bids should be matching, they might have like slightly different uh, language, but they are the same thing across the board. The mobile credentials are an annual license. And that would be the only reoccurring cost, now there are door licenses on there as well, we purchase those one time. Unless we have to upgrade to the latest um, revision. So if we do the micro upgrade, so from six one to six two to six three to six, or six dot four to six dot three to six up. You know, etcetera, but if we need to go to seven, then we have to purchase our door licenses again, and that's standard across all your access control systems.
And that's usually once a year?
Hmm, no, that's probably once every five to seven years, maybe even longer.
So the user licenses we have to give every year?
Absolutely.
And that's seventy-two hundred?
Yes, ma'am. Those, that was an estimate, um, I estimated slightly a little bit high on that, um, so I'm hoping that number actually decreases.
Well, I'm gonna make the motion that the Board of Trustees approve the purchase of access controls through ADS. For four hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and four cents.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Need further discussion?
My own discussion is, our claim to fame, the Butler, we're one of the most affordable colleges around. He did more and more amenities, but then they can't charge a higher rate, he won't come here because they were not available. I would like to see a dollar credit hour, whatever. Charge for stuff like this, students are actually paying for them and these, that if the taxpayer is paying, Capitol Mill Outlay Tax. Two million dollars a year for five years to do fun stuff later, have our expense versus the people are actually using the product.
Thank you, Shelby.
Well, I look at it as, as if we would have done this two years ago, it would have cost us three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We're spending an additional twenty-five, thirty thousand dollars.
Probably have that estimate on more books, huh?
Boom, just kind of.
No, no, I know, I said, it's floating around somewhere.
Yeah.
But the weight did make a better system because now the tokens are, you can pull them back and reissue. The, the system three years ago couldn't do. So we had to purchase every time a person, so it's, it's way better.
It's way better, and now we can, now our tokens can be in your wallet instead of an.
This isn't a physical, they only have to have a physical token in their own case.
No, 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 it goes in your Apple Wallet or your Google Wallet.
Absolutely.
It's not a physical.
No, no, it's, yeah. It's like if you go over Tap Pay with your phone, it's, it goes in that same one, like a credit card.
That'd be in their phone and software, not a piece of.
Right.
Product they carry.
If a student does not have a smartphone, we still have that capability to give them an access card.
And then what happens if they lose the card, they just reissue another one?
And that's what we do today, yeah.
Is there any consequence to that? I mean, even if like you say they lose keys all the time, I just think if you charged them twenty bucks every time they lost a key, they probably less likely.
They have a, it's a twenty-five dollar charge if they lose their access card or their physical key. Because they have an access card to enter the exterior doors, but they have to use a physically, physical key on their actual room.
Before we had access to the outside doors, students had two keys, one to the outside door and to their room. They get charged for their room key, but they'd get charged two hundred and fifty dollars if they lost their outside door key.
That'd be a lot of those floating around, I'd be kind of scared. And how many break-ins have we had here at the college? And dorms?
I don't know that off the top of my head, um. In terms of break-ins with, I mean, we've had situations where a student took things out of another student's room. Um, the advantages that we have now, we've got a closed circuit TV system. If a student says, this was in my room, now it's not there, oh, we can go back and watch the video and find out who took it. Um, so, but outside, outside people coming in and breaking into our dorms. I don't think we have, I don't know that we've had any.
So I noticed one of the bids is from Ellenwood, Kansas, and the other is from Libertyville, uh, Liberty, Missouri.
They have a.
Is that anything?
They have a Wichita office too.
Thank you.
They opened a Wichita office about five years ago, um, we've worked with ADS since twenty eighteen. And then we've requested to keep our same cells representative out of Kansas City.
Thank you.
So if we opted not to use the money for this, what other things could that money be put towards? Is there any, everybody's always talking about the deferred maintenance and stuff that we have hanging over our head, is this money that could be going to something like that? If this is more of a luxury rather than a necessity?
So if you look at the initial projects that the Capitol Outlay was to fund. It was to update antiquated IT systems across Butler Community Colleges campuses. There was one facility maintenance uh, project included on that, and that was for lighting across our campuses. And that's what we sold to our taxpayers that we were gonna spend the funds on.
Twenty-five percent of this one is for crash bars, it is facilities. We picked out forty of the worst doors on the, on all our campuses, or Andover and Eldred campus.
So there's nothing else that it could be spent for at all?
Well, maybe, is there, from a, from a pure restricted fund standpoint, are there? And how, how restricted are the funds in terms of what? Now, I understand, Kristina, your point, that wasn't what we sold the taxpayers on when they approved the mill way back when, but.
I'm just struggling with it because I get it, I mean, everybody wants to have a nicer, cleaner, whatever way, but it's wants and needs, I guess, is where my head goes.
I'm gonna go along with that too, it's a half a million dollars, we promised the taxpayers we're taking care of their tax dollars. I believe this is a time to show them that right now we need to step back. And just let it sit there for a while and then come back. And just let it sit there for a while and then come back. So I will be, buddy, no.
Maybe up the key loss fee of fifty dollars instead of twenty.
I wouldn't be opposed to doing the crash bars with that success. I think, I don't have a, a bomb for my car. I drive a beater until I can't afford it. I choose not to afford a new car.
I'm doing it for the safety of the students. I, I just, uh, I think the time wasted in producing keys and all of that kind of stuff. The safety of the students of, of kids being able to enter and exit buildings quicker, using their phones. Uh, uh. I just, I mean, anytime you go to a hotel. You know, you're. I mean, they use a card, I understand that, but. You're, you know. They can key that card in a second compared to making new keys or. Having somebody come up and open your door and things like that, that I just look at it as a. As a safety issue anymore and. I don't know, maybe I've heard about too many school shootings, maybe I've heard about too many of, of the other things, but I think anyway that you can get a kid. Quickly into a room, a dorm room. Um, I mean, and I was a dorm kid. I lived four years at a campus where I lived in the dorm all four years. And I would have really enjoyed the safety of this at times.
But we, we don't have a si- a safety problem right now.
You don't until you do.
That's correct.
And then you have one and we're looking like schmucks when something happens and.
You're right.
And we've decided to forego safety for cost.
This is unsafe as much. What happens with your phones, Dan? Go to the office and have somebody. Open it for you. I mean, phones die all the time if you're.
They do. And it depends on when it happens. My suggestion is to charge your phone.
I suggested when there's a key.
So I mean, what is, I guess that's the question is. This, this app or this system doesn't lock the door any harder. It's just a different means of locking the door. So the safety issue becomes. If kids lose their key to the outside doors, is that the main thing? Or is it the keys to the inside doors that we're concerned about? I mean, I. Uh, to your point, if it's like, oh, six months from now, something happens and we all look like idiots because we said no to this, explain to me how this. Makes it safer than what we currently have.
Students can give their key to somebody else. They can change rooms without our housing people knowing about it. If they say, well, let's just change rooms. Then if we have some kind of a catastrophic situation that happens in that dorm, like a fire. Or somebody else and we go into a room expecting a student to be there. And they're not there because they gave their key to somebody else. It, it's all, to me, it's a safety issue because we keep students accountable. They're not gonna give their phone to somebody else. Say, here, you can have access to my room, use my phone, because they're not gonna give their phone up, but they'll give that key up. That's why it's a safety issue.
But so far, there's been nothing come of that that we know of as far as a safety issue.
Well, we've had kids, we've had kids switch rooms all the time. And we find out about it and then we have to deal with. Why did you do this? Why didn't you let us know? We find them. But it causes us all kinds of headaches trying to figure out who's in what room when they do that on their own. This would prevent that from happening.
How many, how many kids change rooms? Each semester?
Too many. I can't give you an exact number, but we have it happen quite a bit and.
Five, ten, fifteen, twenty?
Probably twenty, at least twenty. Over the course of a, of a semester.
We could have a policy if you. Change your room.
Well, you have, we have policies that you're supposed to stay in the room you're assigned to, but that doesn't mean they do it. I mean. We try to police that as much as we can. We have RAs that try to check on rooms and that kind of thing, but. It's. Students do, I mean, I'd like to say we have angels and none of them do any of those bad things, but we don't. They do what they want to do until they get caught. And then they're sorry. But I think they're more sorry that they got caught than they are sorry that they broke our, our policies. We find them, but like, it's like lost keys. I think, well, I have the stat on my desk. But the number of keys that lo- are lost. Takes about forty hours worth of work from facilities over the course of a year. That's significant amounts of money when you're paying somebody just to make keys because somebody lost it. Yeah, we get twenty-five bucks a key out of it. But Ireland doesn't have the, the staff to just go make keys all the time. Unless we wanna pay somebody more to do it.
You're paying forty hours, thirty bucks an hour, twelve hundred bucks, and we're paying a yearly. Fee of seventy-two hundred just out of the license.
I think forty hours is way under. I mean, we'll spend forty hours during the start of school just. Remaking hundreds of dorm room keys, so we make probably. Thirty-five, forty keys a month of keys being lost, so.
And you charge twenty-five dollars per key?
We do.
I think they'd be much more responsible with their phones than they are with a key.
We're, we're spend, what, what the ask is, is to spend the money for a purpose that our taxpayers have already said. We want you to have money for these purposes. We're not taking this money, we're not taking this money and deciding as a board, which. I mean, according to Kent, we have the authority to do. Even though the taxpayer said, we're giving you this money for X, we're gonna spend it for Y. What's being proposed is to spend it for X.
How do they know what? What? We were going to spend it for?
To clarify.
Because it was described in the mill when the mill leg was originally approved.
Taxpayers did not approve this mill. It was a capital outlay approved by the board, the board. You can. You can parse it, but the board approved the tax increase, not the taxpayer. They elected the board.
We, we are speaking on behalf of the taxpayers and that was.
There was a huge outcry from the local taxpayers. The room was full of people saying knock it off. Even county commissioners at that point issued a letter to the college saying knock it off and the college ignored it. So the kid didn't say it can be used for the maintenance.
I'd like to call for the vote.
Trustee Good?
No.
Trustee Brungart?
No.
Trustee Jolly's absent, trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Okay, it fails on a three-three vote.
I do look forward to the fourth.
This was the second.
Well, I mean.
Yeah.
I think we discussed it on the sides.
Well, just, just to, to put a little bow on this. It's not going to cost less when it comes back two years from now, or three years from now, or four years from now. So if we think that eventually the idea is electronic locks are what we need, we're not saving money by waiting. We're just kicking that can down the road to pay more whenever we decide to do it.
I think afterward doesn't think it's.
What, perhaps?
We've got a new board coming in a month and a half, so. We could probably do it in January, I don't know what happens.
Okay, well. Christina, thank, well, thank, thank you for the proposal and the work behind it.
Yes, thank you.
Um, we will move on to our next action item, which is Candace Intelligent Insights.
And I would move that the board approved the attached invoice slash agreement for intelligent insights. Just to get on board.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion or questions? Heather, anything that we need to know that isn't in the request for, or the?
I would just say that this provides an opportunity to create efficiencies. That specifically target things like HLC compliance, Title IV compliance. Um, and also student success. And that's central to who we are as an institution, so. Um. Not just having the data in front of you, but actually having a button you can click that creates a message that goes out right then. How often do we have data that, okay, here's the data, we need to take action on it? This software allows us to say, I'm gonna take action right now. I'm gonna click this button within the dashboard. It'll send a message out.
Any discussion or other?
I have a question for you. Um, so. The, the purpose of this is to catch students that are falling behind.
That's one component of it, yes.
Are. Are the instructor required? To follow through when they are informed that a student is falling behind? Or is that a voluntary?
I wouldn't say it's a requirement, but I think we would be hard pressed to find faculty that don't want to. Um, there are specific things, gradebook syllabus that are required components. Um, those are critical to, to student's success, knowing what the faculty members' expectations are. And how the student's doing in the class. And those particular items. Um, are factored in here through the gradebook that um currently feeds into our Aviso, our early alert system essentially. That helps us to know. From anyone working with that particular student, okay, they're struggling in this class. And so it provides that opportunity for wraparound services from the classroom throughout campus.
And then are there metrics that you'll be following to make sure they're just being utilized?
There is that opportunity with this. Um, and again, that actionable data, so this reporting can say. You know, how many classes don't have the gradebook set up? You can send a message directly to the faculty, just hey, a reminder. To set this up. Um, same with. Um. On the student side as well. And you can create your own reports, so you can set your own metrics. Um, if we want to monitor a specific thing, we can create a report for that. And again, that actionable data to send to students. Faculty members can communicate with each other. Um, directly with their students. And it can get really granular into, you know, one specific student across their entire course load. Um, but also an instructor could set their own reports specific to their course.
Thank you.
Can you do more than one student at a time?
Yes.
Any other questions or comment? Discussion? No.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart? Trustee Jolly's absent, trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes. Okay, I did have one quick idea, not regarding this, but regarding the doors. Could we be presented with this, what we charge rate for? For the dorm fee, every year go to four, five percent. Just incorporate another. The average after lifespan of the product. By their, you, you rent per room, just charge another ten dollars. Per month or fifteen or eight, whatever that shakes out, I'm happy to do it that way.
I mean, it's presented certain. We're getting ready to look at our housing budget for, for next year. We can certainly look at that as another option.
I don't know if we would have to take it out of savings and pay for it upfront though, or, but that's another option of getting it done. With funds we have versus, and we could charge for it later.
Heather, thank you. Yeah, Candace passed the six oh. Moving on to the timekeeping system upgrade, Shelley.
Yes, so about six years ago, we started having our hourly associates um clock in and out. Using a timekeeping system instead of a paper system. And we've been using, um, that vendor was TCP Time Clock Plus. And we've been using them for almost six years. We're in the last um year of a three-year contract. That will end in December of twenty-seven. And we, over the time, um, while they do the basic things, it's, it's. Has fallen short in some other areas, particularly as it relates to service. And so some of the things that we are um struggling with are not being able to get problems fixed timely. Um, we're having to create our own workarounds so that we get information that goes between two systems to come across or. Those type of things. And we had one problem they were working on for almost a year. And every time we'd get, think we were getting somewhere, we'd be given a new service rep. And that, that person had to start all over. And typically, they were people that were very hard to understand. And the most of their um service is overseas, the, the um, people that take calls and, and service those areas. Not to say that's not workable, but when you change. Every three months to a different service provider, it's very difficult to have any continuity. And get anything accomplished. So we've been unhappy with that side of it. Um, so we started looking back in August at vendors and providers um that. Could provide better service to us. And there are two that are probably the most. Utilized widely by higher ed, but also by a lot of companies are UK. UKG and ADP. And ADP, uh, their model for service was much more agreeable with how we would like to be treated, so. Um, that's the one we're suggesting. Um, it's a little more expensive, but um. It's, it's in keeping with where we're at now with um TCP is around nineteen thousand a year. So um, we feel like we'll get better service in that for a few more thousand dollars in the subscription. So we'd like to get this going. If we um sign the contract, we could start our install probably sometime in June. And then have it done before the uh, um, other contract ends in December.
How did you get this discount? That's one heck of a discount.
Well, you know, they, they were trying to sell me the Cadillac. And so I asked him to, to take it down to like, you know, a Ford, so, uh, sorry. Or maybe a Chrysler, I don't know. But um, but so they had different levels, of course, that they could, that they sell at, but also. I mean, they're used to selling to big companies and, and I said, we're not a big company, so. Um, but it is, a lot of it is by um. The number of people using it, if you will, the uh FTEs in the system. And so um. We just worked through that cost. Amy um with, that works in IS, she also helped us with them.
Magic.
She does, she can talk them down, so. I think that's kind of why.
I would move that the board approved the attached contract, made it ADP plus the implementation.
Thank you.
I used ADP for about ten years, even as a small fry, and they were.
Yeah, there, that's what I'm hoping.
Any other discussion? Not?
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yeah.
Trustee Jolly's absent, trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Who was it with before?
Time Clock Plus, TCP. Yeah. Mm-hmm. And, and if I could make one clarification for you, um, looking through the master agreement on sabbatical leave. The, on the payment on that.
Yes.
And the way that works is sabbatical leaves are granted by the board. And shall be on the terms set forth by it and may be in the form of two semesters at half pay. Or one semester at full pay.
Okay.
Okay? Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
That segues in nicely to our. Um, oh, I guess I jumped ahead of myself. We'll come back to that. So the next, the next uh, uh, TFA is the Career in Technical Education Fine Arts Program Approval. Dr. Robinson?
Yes, sir, thank you. Um, as the TFA kind of highlights, we have several institutional programs that we've identified that are not fully K-Borg approved. Uh, we discovered these through looking at data and trying to. Make sure that our students had a successful process and that we received the right amount of funding for each of the courses. And keep in mind that some of the courses associated with these degrees fall in other areas that we were getting some, we'll say, original or. Appropriate compensation for those in those classes, but we want to make sure that all the programs. Uh, that we have are approved and that we get the proper funding for them as these programs. Uh, keep in mind that we believe that this was something that kind of just kind of fell, um. We'll say. Balls were dropped along the way because these programs were originally approved. And then K-Borg went through the process of changing the SIP codes associated with them. And then we also had a couple of name changes that uh, kind of threw in some extra wrenches into the mix. Where we kind of lost that piece. And we just dropped the ball on putting in the proper paperwork to kind of update. Our programs with the SIP codes and the name changes. Now, we have put in place now, uh, currently, we have an academic programs compliance committee. That we're gonna use, that's gonna kind of keep all the stakeholders in one place and hold each other accountable so that this doesn't happen again. Uh, so what I'm asking is for board's approval so that we can move forward to make or file the proper paperwork so that we can get these on the books. In K-Borg. And then also for, and I gave you the update on our compliance committee, it's gonna help make sure this doesn't happen again in the future.
Two questions, Dr. Barry. How long will this take?
Well, once you give us the approval, we'll be right on it. And I'd say, give or take a. Couple of months or so. I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I'd say a couple of months.
So the, the kids, the students who have enrolled in this. This means that that class isn't gonna transfer to. The university here in Kansas?
No, it'll still transfer.
It will, transferring count?
Yes, ma'am. We have our articulation agreements with the different individuals and the transfer articulation with the state holds true. We still can do it.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Daniel Lee, are any of these similar to what I sent you that email? It didn't mention them specifically, but I was informed of a similar thing that happened, some programs that didn't get board approval, but we. Started anyway. I heard of this like nineteen months ago. Then we were told, I was told it was gonna be taken care of, and then I was kind of taken aback a little bit last month. I just want to praise Dr. Daniel bringing this to the board. Hey, we found this. Let's get it loaded on.
Yeah, I can't, I, I do think that it's a combination of SIP codes and also a combination of program changes. So when you change a title of a program, you're usually not just changing the title. And I happen to know for a couple of these, the credit hours changed, you know, so those changes are significant and they should come to the board for approval and then to K Board for approval. And honestly, these are already HLC accredited, but our accreditor requires us to sign off that they're state-approved before they get HLC approved. But as Dr. Robinson said, we have looked at it internally and we put a compliance piece inside so that this won't happen again in the future. And I do think it's just through attrition and, you know, different positions being lost. And people were trying to keep, pick up the pieces. It just didn't happen the way it should happen. But, you know, we want to be forthcoming and make you aware of it and let you know that we're working to fix it.
Sort of fix it, I'll move that the board approved to move forward with seeking K Board approval of the programs listed above.
I have a second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yeah.
Trustee Jolly's absent. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. All that passes six oh. Last item is our, the one we added on the, on action, which would be the sabbatical request from Dr. McCain. The TFA says that Mill's gonna present this one. Is there anything to present besides what's on there? What you get, the submitted by name on here, you've been, or Shelley, is this, I mean, is there? Okay.
What's the question?
Let, let me rephrase. So we have the TFA in front that has the sabbatical request from Dr. McCain. Does anyone have questions about the substance or anything that they would want to ask before we vote to approve it?
I'd just like a few minutes to read it.
Let us take a few minutes to do that.
It's one area where I don't micromanage. I just take some advice.
Oh, my gosh, that's a good question. I, like, I don't want to make too high of a guess. That would be offensive. A long time. How long has Vicky McCain worked here as a professor? It, it's a, it's a, yeah, I don't want to make a rude guess. Twenty-five years, maybe?
What's the, Shelley, what's the minimum that you?
I think it's actually longer than that.
Before you even qualified for it?
Six years.
Six years. I asked what the minimum length of service was before you could even qualify to.
Six years.
Yeah. Is this her first sabbatical request?
I think so.
Is it every six years after that, or is it?
Yes.
And then the follow-up to that is that if, if they're awarded the sabbatical, they agree to work two more years beyond that or pay back.
Good.
Very good cause for that.
Yeah.
Is that right before retirement?
Well, I think it sounds good.
All right, Barry, make the motion.
Mister Chairman, I move that the board approved the sabbatical request for Dr. Vicky McCain.
And I'll second.
We have a motion.
Can I put down how long she wants it for, just so we have it on there?
It says for a single semester.
For one semester.
Any additional discussion? If not?
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yes.
Trustee Jolly's absent. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Great. Passes six oh. Thank you all for that. Would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as we amended it.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
Was it amended?
Well, wait a minute, it wasn't.
No, I'm sorry. We amended the agenda. We did not amend the consent.
I moved that we approve the consent agenda.
Yes, as presented, yes.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart?
Yeah.
Trustee Jolly's absent. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Six oh. Thank you for keeping me honest. We got the, anything in the supplemental information of note?
No, just keep in mind, we're not gonna do a November board meeting. We don't see the reason for that. I mean, work session. Yes, we will do the November board meeting as it's almost done. And we'll bring the Centennial Project to you in December.
Sounds good.
Can I ask for nurses' penning, RSVPs, and a volunteer to give a welcome at the nurses' penning on?
I would love to.
Perfect.
It's great.
I will give you those details. And then, I knew you were gonna ask. I had it earlier.
When is that?
I'm looking. December eleventh, December eleventh at seven o'clock.
And?
What day of the week?
A Thursday.
At the Pats?
Yes.
And of course, you're gonna do the one.
But I know they like to reserve seating, so if you're planning to attend, let me know.
I will be there.
I will also tell you that two years ago, the Fine Arts Department was asked by Wichita Music Theater to perform with Wichita Music Theater in their holiday spectacular. When I reserved my tickets for this coming year for Wichita Music Theater, I had the opportunity to reserve my tickets for the spectacular at fifty dollars a ticket.
Yeah.
And I'm sitting on the fourth row. Now, I don't know what they cost now, but somebody told me they were eighty or ninety dollars a ticket now. But I'll just say that it was a two hours of Christmas music and it puts you in the mood. So just saying.
Last thing on the agenda, we have an exec session. The language for that is on page fifty-nine if someone would like to motion us into it. One edit to the, to the language. We can add. You would. Yes, you are. Mister Chair?
Wait, wait, wait.
Add, add Bill Rankinbaugh to the list of attendees, please. Bill Rankin, thank you. I was so excited to get to say something. May I begin? Absolutely. Thank you. Mister Chair, I move the board recess into executive session for discussion of personnel matters relating to non-elected personnel, which, if discussed in an open meeting, may violate the right to privacy to include the board, Dr. Cameron Daniel, sorry, I do a lot of the time, Shelley Stolt, and Bill Rankinbaugh. The meeting will resume within thirty minutes. Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Good?
Yes.
Trustee Brungart? Trustee Jolly's absent. Trustee Rhodes?
Yes.
Trustee Hueslick?
Yes.
Trustee Sheer?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.